...workshops with council and the citizens and staff. And before we start, everyone, please help yourself to some sustenance over there. I think where we left off, the last meeting was, you know, we were on the town or something. So we need to get refreshed on planning and zoning needs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the council. I was actually in the workshop with the citizens before the review happened. It's starting my back this weekend, so look, I don't know where I should be yet. Thus far this year, the planning department is about 58 percent of where we should be for revenue. Ahead on revenue and less than where we should be on the financials. So that's good in terms of operations. We have completed, as you know, the planning study with MAGS. You guys are under way. We're continuing to work on the bike lane project. The implementation of the bike lane project will be next fiscal year, so it's probably July. He will be bringing an IGA to you, I hope March second, to go over the construction costs and the town share of construction costs at the whole grant. I believe the town share will be about $76,000 out of it. Over $3 million dollar project. Carefree ended up having more price as much because most projects end up being carefree. Other projects that we're working on are the general plan. We'll be rolling that out this week. Now, actually, should be through the council by the end of this fiscal year, going to a vote. But at the end of this year, the costs are thin on the budget already. They don't anticipate any, but any cost carryover. Karen usually handles the election cost. Bambi is here to talk about trails and continue to give you some reports on trails and street skate projects that we have in mind. And so I want to see her pointer by putting over that. We continue to work on various projects at various stages.
Okay, let's move back to the MAGS project, the joint project that we have. What's the timeline? What's the next time?
For the bike lanes, we bring an IGA to you for agreement between ADOT and the town and also an IGA between Carefree and Cape Creek to show how we split the local match. That would be in March. The project goes out and is advertised in April, I believe, is what we're shooting for. And construction will begin hopefully in July at San Francisco. We have a six-month project. We're working with them on planning for the project where it doesn't include businesses in the town core.
I'm curious, six months? Why six months?
To do the bike lanes throughout both towns, Cape Creek and Carefree.
Okay, so they might be finished in Cape Creek.
Absolutely.
Right, ma'am.
Is that just for bike lanes or is that also contemplate the pedestrian elements as included in the ADOT study that we approved? Are we even going to touch that? Doesn't it seem to me like maybe there'd be an economy of scale, at least in those areas of town where there's room for it if you did it all done at once?
Vice Mayor, the project was only approved for bike lanes. So we continue the ADOT study for bike lanes to both towns. We continue to work on. There was another project that we approved for design of a walkway from the town hall to schoolhouse. That was a separate MAGS grant that we got.
I see, so it's not under the same grant?
Correct. We are, as we talked about becoming a scale, we have presented to them some projects which can be worked out on the moment where if we can get them to do the work that will help us kind of get us toward getting street skate easement, we're working on that and it looks positive.
So we'll be, so in other words, yes, we may be able to open. Funding sources are different, but we are worth it.
I've also been with Kate Prince on last week about projects that he hasn't minded. Cape Creek Road, we've been sitting down with the engineers for ADOT and the citizens break their off and see where we can get the projects developed with the town saves money and the loan.
Okay. I think you've got counsel.
Included in the bike lane is more money for slurring Cape Creek Road?
Yes. Carefree early on in the discussion asked that the whole project have a slurry code. After everything was done, returning the medians and driveways, things like that, that added $600,000 to the project. We recently went with MAGS counseling, went for MAG for what they call closeout funds. There were projects that didn't expand all the funds and they came down in a month. And Terry Kennedy at MAG was able to keep track of all that. Last week, I was at a transportation review meeting where several options were presented that money could be distributed from projects that are ready to go like ours. And what the MAG group approved was $600,000 per budget. So we would get that $600,000 covered. Still has to go to the managers and then the mayor's committee, management committee coming up. So I believe the managers will look at it this week, Wednesday. So it looks like that will be covered. So the town is really not expanding anything other than $15,000 for private views for ADOT.
And that would be all of Cape Creek Road. All of Cape Creek Road from Carefree right away to Pima.
Counsel? Anything from our citizens on this? Any questions? Counsel, hands it over. Thank you, Mayor.
As I recall, the ADOT, with the MAGS study included things like road narrowing and sculptures at various places and overhead, you know, features and whatnot. You're really only talking about a valid bike lane. So we're not going to tear up the road or do major construction and then a year later have to do it all over again if the second one comes into play.
No, counsel, that's it. Obviously, how to put it, two bike lanes, bike lanes and upsize Cape Creek Road.
And that would be done by widening the road a little bit.
Either widen the road or narrowing the medians. In some cases, we have media rich. In some cases, the medias are 18 feet wide, but if they go down 10 feet, it's still going to be need to replace. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Can there's any good report or any more questions?
Just one more question. When the bike lane project, the bike lane part of this project is completed, the outside edges of the bike lanes will be where relative to the present road easement? The edges of the road easement?
Counselman Durkin, everything will be within the town right of way, right of the way through both communities. There's no additional right of way either.
That's good, but that's not what I asked.
You better understand.
The outside edges of the bike lane will be how far away from the outside edges of the easement?
We are, it's going to vary, Counselman Durkin. As the right of way varies in width from 130 feet to 80 feet. I would say in the town core, it's probably going to be right at.
Right at the edge. Thanks for the support.
Actually, that's your question.
Mayor, Madam, the council have a few reports or updates regarding our trails. The Surry Trail, currently, Mr. Shiner from Lot 37 has agreed to do a reconfiguration and has his attorney sent trail easement language, which we have sent to our attorney. And our attorney currently is reviewing that. And we're hopefully going to come to some kind of agreement on that language as quickly as possible and move forward on that project. So that's.
And this is the Surry Hill?
The Surry Road, the Surry Road Trail, that's correct. And that will come to council as well to have approval of the easement when we decide to do that.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you. The, of course, the Morning Star Road, you know, we're still waiting on if we have closing arguments going to the judge at the end of this month and then that will be a missed review. So we're still awaiting that decision for that trail. The trail along the Hornetoe, we talked to the town manager, myself and Ian went to the Hornetoe and talked to Mr. Price and we have come to an agreement, a conceptual agreement that gives the town access from the wash, actually gives us Mr. Price's back property, access from that property up through his property and across the front of his property in exchange for some lot loan adjustments. And that will also be coming forward to the council that I'm coming to meet with the surveyor this Wednesday. And we're hoping to get that wrapped up within the next couple of months. And that will be coming forward to the council for review and consideration as well.
And how will that improve things? I said that everything goes through.
If you'd like to see a picture of that, I have a picture to show you what. It will improve things a lot.
And that's the east-west access, the west-east and those dimensions.
There then improves the easterly access to the town core because it brings people through wash. We continue to try and seek easements along the wash. We have Galloway, wash going through Gateway, Desert Wearers Park. What Mr. Price is actually proposing is giving the town probably an acre and a half of the rest of the property that could be added to Gateway Park or Desert Wearers Park.
Mr. Price is proposing that?
Yes. As well as a streetscape easement for 10 feet. The town would abandon back a portion of right of way, that's just a little bump from that easement. In addition, Park Craftsman on these two property sites that is giving street scape easement through this past highway up to Circle K. And also, as Amy mentioned, the easement coming up out of the wash will come behind the fence due to respect to the price of wishes that they're not coming to pick along. There is money room between the mountain scape fence there and property.
Yeah, it would be real, it's a very heavily used area, quite unsafe pedestrians versus everybody. So it's really going to look out a lot. So hopefully we can get that accomplished before the end of the year. It's my goal, keeping our fingers crossed. The, this also adds another easement to the Grapevine Wash, which I've got sections of easement through that wash, but I don't have a complete easement. And we're giving the property owners all along there to hopefully get that. And so that horses can have an alternative route behind the town core and get them into the town core more safely. The other trail I wanted to talk to the council about is a trail from Buffalo Bills to the Octagon. And I have a streetscape picture. This is the first curve right here from Spur Cross to the Octagon building here. We already have, where the red lines are, we already have easements there. So the section that I got easements from everybody along here would have to be hard escape because each of the driveways there are currently asphalt and they have a lot of traffic on them. The soft skate part of the easement that go on this side for the horses. So that is a project that would be expensive, but it would connect that whole section coming into town. So I didn't know if I should include that in this next fiscal year budget. Every council wanted to consider that project. The survey is done, it's ready to go out to bid. We're estimating between $80,000 and $100,000. It might come at less, but I have no idea at this point what that would come out to. So that would be in addition to the development fees that we currently have in the budget. And I didn't want to pursue the project, though I also didn't feel it was appropriate time to do that. Keeping in mind that if we do the Hornetoe, we'll have that to deal with. And I have no idea what the cost will be at this time.
So I think with this project, as we approve in the budget, decide where your priorities are.
The other project we're doing as well is the Cartwright Pass. And that's going to include a trail element. It's going to connect the Hogs and Horses, along Cartwright Pass and also to Harolds. So that will be a complete connection then from Hogs and Horses then to Harolds. And then on the other side, the Hornetoe possibly and then on that side, Buffalo Bills to the Octagon. So those are huge projects and I'm open for feedback, get, you know, what the council's direction would be with that. They're almost ready to go except for the Hornetoe, I'm going to get the surveyor, the survey done on that. So we'll have some more concrete numbers to go with, but they're fairly big projects. The street skate is a separate budget than the trails, so they're two different budgets. I have like four budgets. I have two development fee budgets for trails and street skate and two for the maintenance and signage and things like that.
That's the old development fees.
The old development fees. Those development fees have been earmarked for Surry Road, Morning Star, other projects.
Bambi, first of all, you've very much been working on that Hornetoe Trail. I know we talked about that maybe a year or more ago and I think that's an important one to increase the easterly connectivity to the two arenas on the south side of Cape Creek Road at Buffalo Chip and Hogs and Horses. Do you want to follow that with a question on this other component? Explain to me if it's going to be a hardscape easement along that corner, why is that advantageous to us if we're about to put bike lane in there anyway?
We asked him that.
Vice Mayor, I guess people could walk in bike lane in the right of way. It will still be a bit back to the sidewalk. Just wait and see how that works out for a while. The project in front Buffalo Bills, we've seen people struggling to get along there, people turning in, thought it would be good to define the driveways there. Also keeping people from putting their pots and things in the town right of way. They have decided to, mention that. So it's up to the council as we run it through budget. As the town manager says, we'll list projects and we can discuss it in budget and give priorities.
Okay, understood. So it's on the table, but we're not committed to it at this time.
Hornetoe, you started riding around with all the bodies. I mean, it'd be a year from now to.
Yeah, that's young. It would be nice to know relative to the various projects that are in mind here, what the demand is for use. I'm not riding horses anymore, but my recollection is that as I've been through towns, on the north side of Cape Creek Road, there's a lot of, relatively speaking, there's a lot of horse activity. I'm not sure there's, the Jack Cartwright Pass and whatnot, there's a lot of horse traffic there, but I don't know. And I see very little pedestrian activity relative to, you know, in this part of town down at that curve. So in weighing, you know, how and when to go forward here, if there's some way to get a metric on how much of the demand there is, that would be very helpful.
One of the considerations, the main transportation study that came out was that if people had a safe place to walk, they could park and walk. Now there's a Nary Tank has been abandoned as a public works yard. We're planning on using that as public parking so that people could park there and walk through town. Our most precarious places are probably more by the document house in Frontier Town. Both property owners have not expressed awareness to give the town easements in that area. So I did get easements from each of the property owners from Buffalo Bills to Happy Valley Road or, what is it? Hidden Valley Road. Sorry, Hidden Valley Road. That was a lot of negotiations while you're talking. So I do have their easements and you guys, the council has accepted them and it's kind of a ready to go project should we decide to do that. I don't know how you would base the importance of it. We do see quite a bit of pedestrian traffic. I'm not sure when you see that, but a lot of the residents behind there use that area coming into town around the curve.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I probably misspoke a little bit there. It wasn't in my mind's eye, just one project against another in terms of spending money. It was that money versus where we might use that money elsewhere.
Counselman Durkin, we can talk with our consultants about that way to achieve that metric. Trip Kennedy, observing people on Event Day or something, or even take a sample of different days. So we'll see if we get that information as we go through the process.
We definitely focus. Counsel, you're welcome.
Bambi, if we work out the easement with Mr. Shiner, that means then we won't have to build that bridge that we had contemplated and we'll save money right there.
Yes, I'm looking at that. That would save the town a lot of money.
We have two issues with that. That means we do both our insurance obligations, the back and the onlookings we normally do.
So we haven't those reviewed by all maintenance. So you want to take on more of a normal, overall easement.
Yes, Bambi, your work has been more on the south side of Cape Creek Road, starting from infamous curve that Captain Durkin was talking about, all the way up to past Harolds. What, roughly what percentage of that have you been able to plan in terms and execute in terms of the easements along and well path for that for a long time?
Well, it's been very difficult getting the easements, enough easements and a long enough length that would benefit construction costs. And the percentage, I'm not sure what the percentage would be. The longest, yeah, in the red area. All these red areas is what we completed. So we have from Schoolhouse Road to Viola or to Hidden Rock or Viola Lane here, we have a complete.
Yeah, it looks like most of that side side of Spur Cross Road is really pretty good state, especially as you proceed.
The areas in around Tobias and where the poncho is currently located. I think we may have enough easement, but we're, I'm kind of waiting for the bike lanes to get through there to see what I have left over and what we can finish that portion of it. So for semi-fly, on the south side, I've been more successful than on the north side. But there are some key areas like Frontier Town and the document center, which are very hard to navigate, especially being strollers and lots of people walking everywhere where the events are held there. We would like to see that more possible, but.
And the objective here has been to make Cape Creek walkable. So we don't have a person driving here and then having to take the car to another place there. They can walk in between and they won't pass in quite a number of businesses since we don't have.
That is correct. Most of the feedback that we see from these transportation studies is that there is no safe walkable pathway. But if people could park, would stay at the Nary Tank, they would park once and be able to walk it only a mile from Spur Cross to Galloway.
Well, they can go up there, but then if they've had quite a number of breaks, they might have to find.
It can roll. It's downhill, that.
Counselman Durkin, that's why our passive measures, so people think that.
Is that something the council gets to test?
Absolutely.
Do we have a target for when new parking is available?
Hopefully by, now, February, right? Soon. Every time I drive by, it's open, so it's.
25 minutes.
We have, it's just, we have a different, couple of different projects going on. Town Hall, we have, New York Park.
Rodeo Brown.
Rodeo Brown. So I've already got four or five guys, I've been waiting for one or two guys to do things too, so we're trying to get all them.
The next step there is to actually put some dollars to correct the tank itself and outline the parking area and maybe some minimal landscape just to direct people way out through their cars.
And the lights.
And some lights.
Yeah, for security.
For security, absolutely.
Well, we moved all the lot out and the public work has come up decently and we've put some numbers out there striking up. So the biggest impediment that we had to that was the two buildings in the trailer and they're gone now.
One of the things with the Nary Tank parking area that we'd like to create is to the east of that parking area, there's where the Octagon building is, that little shopping center, is to make a walkway through there to Big Earl's and so they could park. They don't have to come up Hidden Valley Way. They can actually go to Big Earl's or to the, the little shopping center there. So they could park it, it would seem more easily walkable. But that's an easement we have to work out with the property owner at that area as well.
This has been something we've been talking about, dreaming about for quite a number of years.
It would be helpful if the department had, as we move towards really a depth discussion with the citizens committee for budget to bring air, a list of what your projects are with the associated cost. And, excuse me, if you don't know the exact cost, at least the ballpark, what are your priorities on that list? I don't think we're going to be able to do everything that each of the departments want, but it would really be helpful to council from the department to identify what is the priority, what absolutely has to be addressed in some way, shape or form as we.
And we hope to use yours as the goal as we target stand.
Good job. Counselman Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. In last year's budget, was the marketing position and money in the planning commission or the planning department?
Counselman says no, not last year's.
Is it planned for this year's or where is that going to resign this year?
It's in this year's.
It's in this year's.
In the planning, okay.
It's in the first year we have.
Okay. And then I have a question on it and a concern. Multiple times in the last few months, people have been observed walking out of the info center with big handfuls of various town provided maps and whatnot. When asked why, turns out they're from the resorts and no one's been going there, dropping anything off. Seems to me that this is a missed opportunity. And I'm concerned that the half person and the money that we allocated last year either hasn't been spent or hasn't been spent wisely.
We haven't spent all of it. We would spend very little bit, actually. I know at a bell number we have, our contract has gone to various establishments to put my results. And we've been looking at maybe putting some of your PRs at the airport and what have you, but I can ask about the easements. Did you fund the maps? Same when you put 1,500, 5,000 and such as I said. We brought all those out, but I can ask for, maybe that's something we just, if I saw, we put them in the pot, I don't know. I don't know if you, there's a variety of locations in the area.
Is that, how many did we print, 2,000?
No, no, I figured they, I don't know, 5,000 or 6,000. I know we contributed somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 dollars to that project. And I know the person who produced it, they sell the ads. So I think exactly roughly.
I'd like to see in the next budget, some idea of what that money is going to be scored and what that person is going to be doing.
We've been using some of the money, for example, for the light medium baseball, some of the advertising, other documents. True West, some advertising in there. There's a couple of, I don't have them off the top of my head. We used some of that for obviously Cape Creek. You want to ask for some of this?
Thank you.
Did you say there's some of the sponsors, the printing costs of the brochure? Yeah, I don't run the business because we purchased a bulk, but my understanding is because it's maps, businesses have ads in there. Some of those ads. Some of those ads put those towards those locations. We just give them out for.
Is that the, is that the brochure, the map, is that sort of the brochure?
That's minus, yes, that's what we have, correct. It's huge, a lot. We give out a lot and folks come in and use it. I know we put some of that in the info center, I know we put the town hall.
They're very popular.
These are a couple of other locations. And they do it year to year, different businesses coming and going. And there's two competing, this easy birds and the folks that we're using for these two competing ones. We selected, or we decided to continue with one of the towns we're using for the last two years. This makes sense.
I think the target audience, at least for us, if you want to get into those resorts in Scottsdale if you have to, or skip the airport, people are probably flying from A to D. But you need to get the resorts because those people are here for, you know, three days, seven days, that's what.
There's a number of kiosk, I just moved my vehicle, we talked about that. But I know there's a number of tourist information areas, metropolitan area, Phoenix, the projects, kiosks. Cars money, I don't know what it is, but I have, but we think we're trying to do something like that. And we shot, we're shooting a new ad this year for, not these, but for the True West magazine, and that's under production right now. I purchased some copyrighted on these images of Cape Creek every time each spring.
If I'm not mistaken, gentlemen, we had sixty thousand dollars budgeted for the dual purpose of economic development and marketing for this year.
Correct.
And we haven't spent very much of that so far.
I think there is somewhere between a thousand.
The town manager uses a microphone.
Oh, yeah. We use somewhere between a thousand and fifteen hundred per month, depending on the number of items going on for that to give the position. But we haven't hired some full-time economic director per se in that position.
And as much as we're here to discuss next year's budget, not the fiscal year that we're in now.
Correct.
It would be nice to know what your plans are for the balance of what's budgeted for this year so we know how much to allocate to the following year. We made a policy decision collectively that this was an important objective for the town. A little disheartening that we haven't made as much progress in that area. But tell us what your thoughts are for how we're going to do it. We still have six months left in this, if we should consider budgeting the same amount or less for next year.
Looking at a broad picture, looking where we have dollars to sell these religious where we have shortcomings, sometimes you have to look at the whole picture and see how things go. Some of the elected choices was not to bring the positions, but to use those dollars like this to the advertising, other places, this kind of. Haven't fully talked about it, but we were starting to be more involved in the events, particularly over for tomorrow's west days. I would imagine we'll spend more dollars marketing those type of events. So with their staff, we'll have discussions, how do you think we can use our charges and what happens? So right now here today, I can't say what we're going to do and what we have for the next six months, other than I know we have some things out there.
Okay, well, in as much as we're trying to figure direction on what to do in the next fiscal year's budget, we're going to need that data for, I know there's going to be citizens committees put together and the mayor suggested, and looking at the trails, we put some numbers down.
Right.
I think the same probably should go for this sort of basket, you know, the economic development, marketing basket, you know, let's, let's break it down, what's in the basket? How much does each deliverable worth? And then prioritize them so we know where we're at for next year.
I do see the finances of this year being somewhat different for the finances. And actually, I know when Robert comes up, the finance director, we're talking about revenues and differences there. So at least in the back of my mind, I don't want to commit to hiring a position that you're more likely to not, would not be here next year. So that's how it kind of works things. So I thought it was better to use those funds, what funds we do use for those items that we be able to, we won't be assuming that we'll be able to use for a number of years. And that's how I'm kind of looking at this right now.
Well, in my, in my view for next year, there are few, if any, ways the town can affect revenue. And sales tax, tourism is one big way. And my way of thinking, if we don't have somebody in charge of marketing the town, okay, then we may fall into a shotgun, well, let's do this here, let's do this there. There's no coordinated. I would strongly suggest that we have a person who would have a coordinated approach in marketing the town.
We use Patty Bell more or less in that type of facility right now, active access. And you know, Cape Creek is different in that we have different sectors between open space and horse and motorcycles, so. I don't think, you know, we all know, it's just one basket to put Cape Creek in. But we'd be, I don't disagree, I think it should be more aggressive. We can find avenues to get out, we're out there.
Let's stay on topic a little bit and discuss this. If you're talking about a marketing director, I don't think budget is going to permit having to market directly. That doesn't mean we can't do something with the resources. We have somebody, but we know there was something we can afford. The example I use is on Friday night, the HBPA, which is the Horseman's Benevolent Protective Association, was at the Carefree Inn for their annual convention. Two hundred people, two hundred twenty acts, or twenty-four states. Arizona has a chapter. And since Arizona was hosting, they asked me to introduce them to members of the business community, which I did a couple of months ago, let them decide. What their decision was, was the Buffalo Chip Friday night. I don't know what was going on in the town Friday night. It was like we'd run for a promotion. I mean, it was packed. I literally, I'm not exaggerating, had to go to Stagecoach Village to park and walk back to the Buffalo Chip. That's all. Everything downtown was packed. But this is the point I'm trying to make. These people, and most of them are eastern Mississippi, so they're not usually, they've seen western stuff on TV or they've read about it in a book, but they haven't been to something that's down, orange, funky, gritty as the Buffalo Chip with the bull riding and the whole nine yards. We were able to get in on that at the ground level because the HBPA in Arizona was hosting the event. And so obviously, I'm going to promote Cape Creek. Well, these resorts booked groups months, if not years out. And something that Patty could do or whomever were going to have to do that is if you want in with these places, you get with the concierge and find out who's coming in so you can get first shot at them, as long as we have material to give to people when they come in, especially these big conventions. Because conventions by and large are in town for five to seven days. Two of those days are tied up with the symposiums, lectures, or things like that. And they're ready to bust out. And Scottsdale, of course, has a lot to do, without resurrecting any argument about who's more or less. We have something that Scottsdale does, whatever we want to call it. And I think we're missing out on a market, not because we're trying to not do it, but because we don't have someone on staff to do it. And I don't think we're at a point that we can afford what is called marketing. That is the time, staff position, and you're going to have to pay if you're going to get somebody good. But if we have someone that can do at least the minimal, at least going to the resorts, talking with the concierge, finding out who's coming into town, when they're coming in, what type of, it'll pay dividends for the town.
We do, so adding to the concierge conventions, and we do a swag back, you know, for stuff from different businesses. So we do some of those things. I don't always mention.
Well, some of those things, for example, where you, when you have good relationships with the concierge and often times, I mean, we treat them for lunch out in church, that's what we do. And it's that simple. It's a lunch. You don't need to buy them a Jaguar or anything. But you get in a social situation, get them away from the resort for a while. Because what you really want, who is the chairperson of the group that's coming in? You want to make the contact before they get to Scottsdale, not after they get to Scottsdale, and get on their agenda for things to do. And we have plenty up here. I mean, we go with, well, we all know what the town has to offer from everything, from funky to five-star big place. Once again.
Question, are you there?
I don't disagree with the mayor, the full-time person probably isn't necessary. I think we have the part-time person and we have other staff that we can lean on to the extent that the part-time person is available. One of the concepts that we discussed last year, and I don't know if it was pursued or not, never came to council, was to look at outsourcing that to either a marketing firm or, you know, go to one of these people who organize these concierge groups and just allow the part-time position to manage an outside contract. I think Red brings up a very good point in terms of where we spend our money. The return that we can get on this money is, the percentage is going to be much greater than the return that we're going to get, say, you know, probably from bike lanes, just to use an example. The dollar for dollar return on that investment is going to, it's going to take longer to pay it off. So I think we need to consider that in terms of drafting a budget for next year. Do we want to do more? Do we want to do less than we did this year? If you're saying sixty thousand dollars kind of leaves our hands tied behind our back because there's only so much we can do with it to be effective and it's not worth the effort. And we need to consider more to make it worth the effort, or we need to consider abandoning the thought. But we need that data.
I like the idea and the thought. I know what the full-time position. I also like your planning because from the outside, I mean, even my first came here, it's not a necessarily pedestrian for me town. So we are taking strides to do that. And I think that would help a lot because a lot of times folks can't get from Neri up to the chip because it's difficult to do that business, especially at night. So I think will we have those funds now as a place for? And I think with guidance, we could use that position better than we need to now. And I understand that.
Counselor Turf. So I think there, let's see, how do I put this? It might be a good idea if Patty's plan of attack, whatever that is, was presented to the council. I won't be able to comment on it positively or negatively. But these two gentlemen here, might be Reg, Tom, Ernie. But I'm, there's been some good ideas. I'm not, I guess what I'd like to see is, here's what we're doing now. Here's what our promoter is engaged in. Here's her, here's her plan of attack. Here's how she spends, you know, her months, because she sees. And maybe we, once exposed to that, we say, oh, it's happening, or maybe it needs to be tweaked. Before we make a decision on whether or not we should or can spend money on expanding the role or changing the role or something, I think we'd like, I would like to see more specific definition or explanation of what the present role is. Because I didn't get a clear picture of, well, I heard that we should be doing this and I heard we're trying to do in that, but nothing ever came together.
I'd ask you to put a better plan, go on forward. But yeah, this year, maybe next year, this way we have a better plan. We are event driven, like you said, Cape Creek, tomorrow's days, whatever. We are, we tend to be that way. Is there a better way to do it? And at the same time, if you should general market, I'd ask you to put something in there.
Well, I'd also like to know what has been done, I think. And I'll be very specific and based on, I think, some remarks that the mayor made. We're sending her to conventions, okay? Is she making regular trips down to the Princess and the Hyatt and all these places, engaging with the concierge, saying, hey, I'm going to have you and the guy from the Hyatt already come on out. We're going to have dinner at the Buffalo Chip and, you know, get to know each other and you tell me who's going to town? Is that happening or is that not happening, right?
I knew she's gone. I can't figure how often.
No, I know. It's, yeah. You have an employee, they're doing a job. Every so often, you sit down, exactly what are you doing? You know, do we need to tweak it or not? So I'd like to see it.
See, that's a good point.
Description of what's going on there.
We are event driven, somewhat like the racetrack, we have a big event coming up this weekend. But we also have the other days of the week. And when the handle is up, the waiter, the handle is wagering. I want to know why. I want to know what happened not only at the track or at the OTBs or at our out-of-state market to cause that. Now, the point I'm making this Friday night, this town was like, it was in the middle, we were in the middle of wild west days. I have no idea why the town was doing this. I mean, over the top plan. I think it would be helpful as policymakers for us to some way or have someone know that so that can we duplicate it, what are the one plus ones that have to come together to have another weekend like that? When I asked Larry, when, I said, what the hell's going on? He said, the snow version. Is it that simple? It may be. I mean, there's snow getting back east or probably not the, whatever, the snow back there. It's only that they have come out here early. But it's helpful to know the answer and not just say, man, what a great Friday. No, why was it a great Friday? And once finding that out, and that's where the marketing person comes in, is can we duplicate? Can we do it better?
I do know part of my casual conversations on what how people do to the Cape Creek ads, the weekend, where they go on Friday, Saturdays, and it's not necessarily Monday, Tuesday, Friday that people are going to do, but they do think of it more than the weekend.
Well, right across the street, is the answer to that restaurant's success because of the brand? Does anyone know? Has anyone gone across the street to find out? I mean, I'm curious. I don't, I'd be there and that live away, but I mean, it's okay. But yet even on a Monday night, when we're at council, you can't get in regularly. On a Monday night.
It's just for a mutual brand.
Okay, is that the reason?
I think it's probably one of the largest parts, but it's also that people want to come to Cape Creek, you know?
I mean, I can understand why they would want to come on a Friday, Saturday, that I get. But Monday, Tuesday, and the restaurant across the street, the parking lot, I mean, the cars are out parking along the road. And maybe that is the answer to the brand. Well, we're a brand. This town is, whether we like to think of ourselves as a brand, we are a brand. And we're certainly different from Carefree and we're different from Scottsdale. I'm going into, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da. But something that is attracting people here on a Friday night to the extent of so jamming the town that there was no parking. And I do think no parking, I tried to sneak in everywhere, all the tricks that I knew and could not get in. Okay, and ended up in State of the Trillers.
If you want to explore, sure, a pound, you can do that somewhere, easily.
Well, just to. I don't think anyone would argue that we don't like economic development here in the town. And by economic development, I don't mean real estate development. The strength of this town is tourist and anything that we can do that aids that, I think we're better off. I think, Counselor Turf, it's a point, what are we doing now? Okay, let's get a handle on what have we, what are we doing now in the short term with a part-time person? It's incumbent on us, what do we want? What are my suggestions going forward? To my way of thinking, a part-time effort, you're going to get part-time results. That's all.
Counselor Turf.
Sitting here listening to this conversation, I'm really conflicted. I understand what we're talking about, we're trying to increase the, increase the bottom line revenues for the community. I don't see where that's our job from a government standpoint. But I've gone along with it in the past by supporting our west days, yesterday's, all those things that we've been getting linked to. But Reg, I gotta say, disagree with you. Tourism is more susceptible to economic down periods than saving a tire store, an oil machine place, things that are consumable type, things that the people who live in the area, in this area, the wide Walmart shows what they did at the center of that, don't they? I think, I think we'd be better off attracting businesses that are going to be around for a long, long time where you don't have to worry about people flying in or perhaps spending money. But I think, I think we'd be better off attracting businesses that are going to be around for a long, long time where you don't have to worry about people flying in or perhaps spending money or you're getting it from the locals. So when those issues, those opportunities come up, I would urge the council to take a good, strong look at those and not throw a roadblock in their way. Because that's where, you would not put all of your retirement money into one investment, say, IBM or whatever. You want as many buckets as you can to keep them all going. Where one falls, the other picks up. Hopefully, that's probably the goal, long-term goal. We're really about to have this community for what we do economically, economic development wise. That's all I got to say about that.
Counselor, about your raise, it's not government's responsibility technically, but we're still at a level of government here in this town where, I never consider myself a politician in this town. I've been on the council longer than anybody and you're next to mine. I do consider myself a public servant and because of that, I have a responsibility in this town to do what I can to make sure that it's successful. And part of that success is, it's economic, that's to me welfare, when I say, health, safety and welfare, that also includes that. If one of us decides to get elected and go down to the state, now you're in with the sandbox with the boys and girls that play in politics. That's a different thing. But out here, we're still insulated from that. I mean, I can tell you when they're considering the budget down at the state, they don't have this type of informal government for their citizens. It's all done in their committees and that, boom, 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 boom. We're still a little bit more informal, so economic development, like you're talking about, which I'm all for, or using tourism to get more people into town. Maybe it's my marketing mind works overtime, but we have now Wild West Days, Fiesta Days coming up. And it would be nice if our businesses, the businesses paid for it. Why? Because the businesses are going to benefit. Every customer that comes in between now and the weekend that Fiesta Days is, every customer, they're given a flyer. They're given a flyer about Fiesta Days coming up. So they have this little flyer, something they can hold up, put in their pocket. It's in their consciousness and they're going to show up. They're going to show up on that weekend. It's the little things like that. Is it our responsibility as the elected people to think about these things? Probably not. Probably not. But as public servants, I say we probably do to some extent.
And I guess I wasn't being critical as much as I was saying we need to look at diversification of the income streams.
But if council does not provide guidance, then we just subject the topsy-turvy. I do think.
We can have this discussion all for. This is not, this is not. We do focus on both fronts. Ian, with the SAP and the tractor supply and that section, it's more in the vein that Ernie's talking about. And where that historical pool is moving different, we do try to balance both of those, you know? And we're not trying to do more big bucks because I understand that's not our drive. We want mom and pop, but at the same time, we want to make sure we have some business that's sustainable. And some of them may be corporate chain and that's fine, you know? We do want to keep our uniqueness. I think these are one of these lighting years, it's very emotional. Shops, restaurants and stores and all that is, it's why partly our people come here. It's part of the reason we like to do this. It's not going down the same old thing. Or Mr. Mass, same old thing.
Well, we do have two different areas and they are, they both have their personality, which is Carefree Highway, which has a different type of economy than the core. And the businesses out there for the highway are not going to come into the, into the core. You're not going to have the Walmarts, but yet we do have a brand right across the street. And is that the core across the street?
I think.
I like the logo, which is between Carefree. Is that the core?
You know, much more marketing, but.
It was going to be a little grocery store when I lived out here in the suburbs.
A regular is a region. It's a small, it's like maybe it's back home. You know, it's like New York's back home. Because smaller regional chains would do very, very well in their market. They may survive outside, maybe not. As you know, back, you know, from, a regular would have difficulties in markets just because there's a lot of the Chinese, pretty Italian food back there. So, but here it works very well. So I think there's a balance in all of them.
Okay, enough time on this. We need to hear it from you.
Robert.
Keep in mind before Robert gives his presentation, the state is in a financial challenge right now. And if they don't get it sorted out, it's going to be a really bad season in two-five and sixteen. And whenever the state's in trouble, the citizens' towns get affected. Sit down, I'll have it. I mean, if you will, I was ordering you to sit. If you will to sit, I'll sit.
Based on last meeting, I compared a projection of revenue for this upcoming fiscal year and the budget you were much were speaking about. And I thought I'd attach, at least for your reference, this printed out from the Economic and Business Research Center at the University of Arizona. Of course, this is for education purposes. But as you can see, there are economic indicators for personal income, retail sales, total amount of farm employment, population and residential building permits. And this is the Phoenix Mason's Glen Dale area forecast. And we've got thirteen through eighteen here across the top. And you can see that they're all positive gains through eighteen, which is a good thing. And then on the next page, I have basically my revenue projection by the major funds, the ones that have majority of revenue. And if you add them going from left to right, you'll see that it doesn't toll over the total because there are smaller funds that are in the tolls. But for reference, the 2015 budget of seventeen million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and six dollars is taken directly from, well, that does equal the budget document for FY15. The total sources by, I mean, sorry, the sources by total are listed on the top here on the left, local tax, local fees. They share ratings in the slightest. And you can see that's a general trend in the general fund. And in the enterprise fund, we have a reduction. Those are the two largest funds, a reduction in routing being projected. And there's basically two underlying causes. The general fund is principally sales tax and reduction in, sales tax is being projected because there was a change a couple of years ago. It was instituted, it's taking effect beginning January first in construction sales tax. And so some of our sales tax dollars may disappear to a point of origin where the materials are sold rather than the place of construction or where the contract is being executed through the.
You're projecting that we're going to be off a million dollars.
Yeah, there was also a slight reduction in state shared revenue this year that was unanticipated by those who project from up capital state, state shared sales tax. And then on top of that, we have a hit against our, potential hit against our state shared sales tax for the upcoming year because the program cities will be funding the operating expenses of the department of revenue for the first time, eight point four million dollars. An exact figure or amount allocated this time, I did not calculate specifically, but it's accommodated in the number that I provided. Then the other thing that's affecting these two major funds, the general fund, not so much, but the enterprise fund, besides the reduction in sales tax that's dedicated for wastewater operation, is the reduction in development impact fees. And that's because the capacity fees are less than the development impact fees were. So, but we do project, again, as reinforced by this outlook, we do project new builds in town to be greater than what was realized this year. And almost equivalent to what we thought was going to happen this year in terms of the budget. So that's a good thing. But as far as what we get out of that, in total, may go down because of the smaller jobs not being taxed where the work is being performed. There's a proposed legislation to clarify this issue for contractors. And I'm not sure at this point, because I haven't seen it, how that may modify the construction sales section might realize from contracting activity within the town.
Does everyone understand what this page is saying?
So if you look down the right column, you'll see that the total last year projected was seventeen million, but this year it's sixteen point two, sixteen point three million instead of seventeen point six million.
So we're projecting one point four million dollars less revenue.
Yeah, that's correct.
Once you go to page three, I think it's, it breaks it down a little differently, but for the general fund, we have projected difference of less than seven hundred seventy-six thousand. More touches on the items that Robert was just speaking about, so.
Yes, and then the enterprise fund is basically the development impacting versus the passive charges. So that's kind of the two main areas.
So in shorthand, it's especially construction. It's not point of use, but it's not point of sale and it's always going to be a secondary of tax and taxation. And that will affect the rate.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's kind of that, there's a distinction now between alteration, modification and construction. And so that's the test. It's not, it's all, some of the tax is still going to exist and we do have it not projected for that. It's just to what extent, we're not sure because this is the first month, January is the first month it was implemented. And I really have, I don't have any numbers, so I don't, and if a contract is entered into before that time period, it may affect the disposition of the funds in terms of what type of tax we're reporting into whom. So it might not be clear for a couple of months in terms of what its impact might be on our construction, raise of sales tax.
I want the peace managers leaving today and the Ken Stolpert, which is from the lead there, from the lead. And they have legislation, they're going to have proposed next month, trying to clarify exactly what Robert's talking about. Hopefully that is on the company's desk in two months, if they expedite it. Because there's a lot of confusion regardless from us or Phoenix or wherever. So they have some legislation to clean that up and make it more definitive, which one is what. But you won't see that for a couple of months.
We need to bring back whole people.
That boat sailed. So I think these are preliminary numbers and you, so, but I want to have a mindset that when we start thinking about how we want to use our resources, what's going to work for priorities, so we kind of have a space to look at, you know?
Which is why I wanted to bring the passion, like with this, with the cost and prioritize. I agree because there's not going to be enough money to go around for like everything for everybody.
And there's some things that are higher priority right now, I think. Town engineering is in good cases for some capital, non-capital operational things that we really need to look at. So there's some adjustments there. And why that affects us is because right now, we on average send over about one point two million to the utilities. So we have to be able to find a way to make the utilities a little more sustainable and that will release some pressures on the general fund.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I was going to jump ahead to that very point. We're, we have money budgeting in our general fund, sixteen million dollars, thereabouts. It's roughly one and a half million dollars less than what we have been projecting for this year. We're spending one point two million dollars to subsidize the operation of our wastewater, drinking water utility apparatuses. Is this not in anticipation of those revenue cuts, is this not a really good opportunity or a good time to pursue the opportunity of lending utilities to try and acquire their affluent so that they can pay us to process their waste to the tune of some millions of dollars a year?
Absolutely. Numbers mean something. I haven't seen one number at all from them. I know David's been working on this projection, which is fine. And I think it is wise for the council to review what they're going to be giving away, which is fine. If it's a hundred twenty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, what that means and the timeframe that may, what will, there are four sets to look at. The eighty percent throughout, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we get a fair return for what we are on the giving as substitute. But we have some numbers. It's still a point in the ball is in their court to show us what they're looking for. We have some idea of what we, what we can afford. We get the best as we might.
We didn't get a preliminary proposal from them a couple of months ago.
We have preliminary, no numbers.
No numbers. Not even volume of that we could then.
A hundred twenty, I think David can correct me if I'm wrong, it's about a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons a day. We're, we're, right now, we process about forty-five to several capacity to plant. That will bring us up to roughly sixty-four percent, looking at the new additions we're going to bring on and looking at the expansions of Echo Canyon and some of the dry lines. Over me at high sixty, seventy percent, I'm pretty sure. Once you get able to, you guys doubt, you know this margin, you got to look at design, the student streaming plan and how fast you got to go.
Well, but we've been at roughly forty percent for years, no growth. Bringing this on can help make us.
I agree.
Self-sustaining as opposed to subsidizing out of the general fund would alleviate the pressures from the reduction in revenue that are happening because of state legislation. And that's a problem that we'll, we'll be prepared to face because we won't be wondering how we're going to pay our bills in the meantime.
Don't mistake what I say, I'm not against the year. I just want to make sure whatever the year is makes sense for us. I know they want to connect a lot, David's the engineer on this, but whether they connect the San Jose or they connect down on Carefree Highway, different impact to our systems. And we want to make sure whatever impact we're having, maybe two different points of entry. However that works, we want to make sure it doesn't affect us negatively where we seem to have most of our wastewater issues in price in historical pool. Whether it's grease traps, whatever, whatever Carefree has to do, just all those types of things. So if we're going to come in now, and I just want to make, we got that in finances, want to make sure that it's not going to put such a stress or strain on our system that we'd be more crisis managing fixing things. So, but I'm not the engineer. David's looking at that. I think he's doing a fine job doing that. And I think we need to know when they come to you folks, what the cost is to us, what the return is to us and how is that going to affect our system. I'm not saying those are bad things, it's just we want to do diligence.
So what do we need to do to get the numbers?
We're working, like I said, I think we spoke last time, David's working with Liberty on that. Obviously, they're under pressure to get down, but they also want to get it to a point where it makes it financial sense to them. We want to make sure it makes financial sense to us. And we want to look what they're doing with Scottsdale too. You know, not even though our cost of operations are different, it's nice to see like, I didn't say have some comparison, you might know David's working on that also. But I don't, I don't think it's fair to, I think it's good for the town to be under some sense of urgency or stress that we have to do this because that puts us in worse position. And I think it's a valid operation, it's a valid commitment. Just, let's just make sure it makes.
Thanks, Coach.
Counselor, and Counselor Durk.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're presented here with one point two million dollars less in revenue. And I think it's incumbent upon council, what can we do to ameliorate this? Having worked on a number of these types of transactions, the suggestion would be we determine a framework for this deal. Not the hundred little details, but the framework. We can determine that in conversations with Ernie. And I do have a sense of urgency, okay? These deals have a way of just disappearing. I don't know what mandate. I don't know what mandate Liberty is under from ADEQ, but it's incumbent upon us to. Let's talk with Liberty and find out exactly what are they willing to do, okay? And if they're going to give us, whatever it is, a hundred and twenty-something thousand gallons a day, that's a lot of money. And now technically how that's achieved, I'm not the engineer. But I think we need to find out fairly quickly, because we're putting this budget together, okay? Now, and it has substantial, substantial revenue stream, number one. And two, it helps an underutilized wastewater treatment plant. Anything we need for that plant, its flow, not we figure out the grease traps and all that other stuff, but seems to me this is a win-win. And as soon as we find out what the deal is, then council can make an informed decision.
Let's go, all right, let's also look at the dry lines, if they're connected, flow, because that's what the plant is built for, I mean, that's the core reason. So there's two, I'm supporting, there's a couple of things we have to make sure of that.
In the land of priorities that are right, okay? Canyon Ridge Estates has sat there, and Estata de Troya has sat there for years. They'll wait a little longer, the Liberty deal is now, okay? And if it's not a deal, okay, all right, let's move on. If you know what the structure of the deal is, then we can make a decision.
If you don't have the numbers, it's hard to do.
Exactly, yeah.
Why don't you extend an invitation to the Liberty people to meet with council? Just like a meeting now. Because right now, we're just kind of, we, we keep, somebody's talking, somebody's talking to them. And we still don't have anything. So let's get in here in front of us and say, do you want to do business with us? Or do you want to go to Scottsdale, or do you want to go to wherever you want to go? It's fine, just let us know. But instead of doing middlemen negotiations.
We should not have open, public negotiations, because that is by nowhere beneficial to us.
I mean, I don't think I'm suggesting negotiation, and that's not what I mean.
More than wanting to bring them here, we have, we have those discussions, and they will be.
Well, you, you know, you negotiate once you agree to, okay, we're going to do business. Right now, we really don't have the beginning numbers in order to make any sort of decision, including the one, do we want to do business with you or not? And on the other side of this equation, and I've looked at it for a long time, is Canyon Ridge and Estata de Troya are dry line. You need to give them, if we want to hook them up, you need to give them at least two years' notice for something like that. It's an expensive property, you can't just spring it on them, it's like an increase in water source. But to say by X date, two thousand and sixteen, you need to be hooked up to the source system. That, of course, would change, who would help change that? Two, but this, I'm sorry, Councilman Durk.
It's okay, everybody gets in. I, I'm really confused about our, or your perspective or caution associated with overloading the wastewater treatment plant with this deal.
Not the plant.
And I'm just, and I'm, and I'm.
Collection.
In the end, I think it had to do with, with hitting the capacity. No, I'm, I'm familiar with what the law is and whatnot. What I'm really confused about is why, especially without having put any numbers on paper, we're, we're entertaining thoughts of a hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day from an existing group of many, many homes. And on the other side of the, of the analysis sheet, we're saying, well, what about Canyon Ridge Estates and Estata de Troya? I can add all those up and, and only have to use my hands three times. So I, I think, I don't get it. I, I don't get, I don't get why we're even worried about that.
Because we're, which means homes coming on and rock, all of that.
I know, that's a, that's a what if, that's a might happen, okay? And, and everybody knows, we spend an extra one, we transfer an extra one point two million dollars a, dollars a year into this wastewater treatment plant. The deal may not come through, but if it does, it's a sure thing, it's money, it's, what did we hear from our engineer that after two weeks on the job? The solution to pollution is dilution, okay? We want, not, not, we, we, this is, this is washing machine stuff and coming out of people's showers. It's not grease trap stuff coming out of restaurants and bars. I don't, I, I, I'm, I'm really upset that we're, that we're not chasing this hard and, and trying to make it happen. And, and letting things like, well, what if we get to within fifteen percent of an eighty percent capacity issue? If, if that happens, it happens, right? Frankly, it's not going to happen for a good number of years. And at that point, the sky doesn't fall, it's just we have to approach the state and say, here's our plan going forward on how we're going to deal with it.
But you built that plan, you built that plan with mind of capability. You did not build it for KFrey, and you did not build it for Scottsdale or anybody else. So when you put that plan, when they looked at the analysis, the number a year ago, it wasn't bringing on KFrey, it wasn't bringing on Third College. It was looking at what you have people build up, what you have in mind, what's possible, it's coming. And that's what, that's what you're looking at.
You told me what the numbers were. You said we'd get to sixty-four percent if we had an extra hundred and twenty. I guess you and I probably ought to stop talking. I want, I want to hear from this gentleman, what, what is really going to happen i- if we do the Liberty deal in terms of the, the capacity issues with the plant. As far as I'm concerned, although the other things we've been talking about, fifty thousand dollars for a trail, or, you know, eighty thousand dollars for this thing, all pales in, in comparison to this deal here.
Let me bring your way up this key. We did patiently back there. Okay, we're talking about a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per day.
That's rough.
Right now, our plan with the latest numbers from the last three years of projection is running at thirty-five percent capacity, not forty-five. If we add Liberty, right now, we'll get fifty percent capacity.
Based on a hundred and twenty thousand.
Based on a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons.
That's twenty-five.
Four hundred and sixty percent.
I've got the numbers to get here, that's what I've got.
We've got to tell you these numbers before you go.
I'm just telling you now, so.
So it'll be.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, let's get this clear, you're, you're responsible for this.
Yeah.
You don't do surprises, don't do surprises.
I'm not trying to.
When you get the numbers, you go in his office, right away, just like my department has come to me and say, oh, the numbers just came down, these are out, we worked them up today.
Okay, so taking the past three years of flow projection, we add roughly ten million gallons per year to our total flow that comes in over the course of the entire year. That equates out to about twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand gallons per year. I took that projection line, I ran two sets of tables today. We didn't do Liberty, we stayed on that same growth curve. When do we hit eighty percent? When do we hit a hundred percent of capacity? And I've got the years with that gallons. I took Liberty, I said, okay, we'll add a hundred and twenty-five thousand now, so we have a immediate jump. And then we continue on that same line with no other additions. And when do we hit eighty percent? And when do we hit a hundred percent? The difference is, taking Liberty on means that we would be at the eighty percent capacity mark four years sooner than if we don't take them on. Four years. We take, it's, we take Liberty's flows now, we have six to six and a half years before we're at eighty percent.
So seriously, take them on now, and it would be ten and a half years if we didn't take them on.
Right.
And that's based on projections.
That's projections, okay.
And if we did take them on, what we added Canyon Ridge and Estata de Troya, is that?
I haven't kept, because I should have to count all of them off.
Wait, 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 excuse me.
That, why wasn't that part of the projection with or without? I would have to look at that, because what would happen, like, is, say we invested a million dollars, we put in the trunk lines from the treatment plant back up New River Road from Astro House there. We picked, we picked those guys up. We picked them up all at once, so here we have another one of these rapid jumps like this. And I can certainly do the quick calculations and show the graph and show us where it means we'll happen. My preliminary analysis with Liberty, we're looking somewhere between two and four million dollars for them to buy in our capacity charges. I don't have the firm number yet, I've asked Liberty to come back and tell me exactly how many residential lots we're talking about, how many commercial parcels we're talking about, what size water meters we have for both of those. Because as you guys know, with our approved capacity charges, it's all based on the size of the water meter and whether it's residential or commercial. So as soon as they give me those numbers, it's a thirty-five second calculation for me to tell you what they're buying is based on our tissue device capacity charge scale. And that's what we have to base it on, because that's our policy. As soon as I know that number, they'll know that number. Now, part two of this is that Liberty.
That is on the crew retired debt, so they're buying capacity at a cheaper rate too.
Right, but we, we can't go back and capture the old debt, that's, we can't do that. That's water meter grid.
You have to look at this from the perspective of where we are today, not where we thought we were going to be seven years ago when we drastically overbuilt a twenty-five million dollar wastewater treatment plant in anticipation of a forty-year growth curve that was aggressive then. The economy has changed, it's not growing at that rate. It's likely that if we don't do what David's talking about, I don't see this as being as a ten-year horizon to when that's going to be online, unless we start taking aggressive action to force our residents to hook into sewer, which the impetus to do that and to burden our citizens with that, I, I don't see it right now. Why would we do that when this all, other alternatives here? I mean, you say that the analysis was done when we built that plant, that's being very charitable. Because A, we're looking at the quality of the analysis, and B, we're looking at the times that the analysis was done. It was, it was a moment in time, and we're making projections based on that economic reality versus what we're dealing with today. It's drastically different, and now we're stuck with this plan that we have to get operational. It's running in a deficit, it's running inefficiently, it's causing a, it's having a hangness impact on the neighbors who live nearby there, because it's not running properly, and there's fumes associated with that. We need to dilute the flows. I mean, I, I think we've got to approach this with an open mind, particularly because Liberty's at our doorstep and asking for it.
I think we do. I think the difference is, having the discussion you're having right now, is they come in knowing our position now, which is aggressively to accept. And they're going to say, instead of coming at four million, you're going to come at two million and pay ideally rate, what advantage is that to us?
We're not saying we're not going to show up with the poker, without our poker face. This is us guys talking here.
No, this is not.
You're lifting the cards and the cameras are watching.
Yeah, this is not the place to have this discussion, and I don't want you to go on the table back.
The discussion is nothing other than go get the numbers, not go give away the farm. We need the numbers. And we need them in order to do this budget, because if this deal's going to come to reality, it's going to happen in the next fiscal year.
That's the mantra I've been saying for the last, let's see some numbers. David makes his projections, which are fine, but if we're not getting anything from Liberty, it's going to be harder for me, anybody can do this.
But what do we need from Liberty other than to know what their flows are? It's going to be us who sets the price.
Well, yeah, I.
This is a serious question. What do we need from Liberty other than to know what their flows are?
We need the residential count, we need the commercial count, we need the meter size, and it all falls back on our grade structure, which comes on the tissue.
How much of a premium do you charge?
Why would we charge a premium?
Why would we charge a premium?
The wastewater treatment plant is not a process, a profit center.
You've got down one point two million operating flights every year.
Yeah, exactly, it's not a profit center. Why would we charge a premium? We'd charge a market rate.
Because right now, you give a discounted capacity. And I'm, I'm just saying, it's a position to be, we're going to take advantage of this situation. And I think we should, let's make sure it's more beneficial for KFrey.
Of course.
That's all it says, of course. I think.
Well, I'm yet to hear any compelling argument as to why it wouldn't be beneficial for KFrey.
I know it, because right now, I got them coming at a million, he's saying four. And I don't know what those numbers are, because it's all high in the sky right now. We don't know what the discussion is. I'm used to having discussions and negotiating deals, or at least having some sort of what the numbers are. And I can't tell you what those are now, and you can't tell me, and he can't tell me. So right now, we're having a lot of discussion about.
But when we say, but we're, we got to nail this down. When we say what the numbers are, we need to know what the numbers are to have the discussion. That's my question. What numbers do we need to know? And that question is, or what I believe the answer to that is, is the flows. Is there something I'm missing beyond that? Yeah, the, the amount of gallons a day of effluent that Liberty is currently processing, where it's coming from, residential and commercial users, and in what percentage? What else do we need to know?
I hold my ground, is I don't think this is the right table for that format. Now, I mean, boy, I just think you want to have fair negotiations with what you do to Liberty.
I don't think, but let's, let's bring it up to a high level. I think we all agree that this has the potential of increased revenue to the town. It has the potential to increase flow through and underutilized wastewater treatment. If those two are true, then it's incumbent upon us to pursue the deal.
But I think we have to let our staff do diligence and know certain negotiations. I've seen other situations in town where we did not follow professional negotiations, where it didn't work properly. I think we have to give some room to our staff, to our professionals, without applying pressure until they come to us with their professional opinion.
David says we're numbers today, I mean.
No, no, I don't agree. We just sit here, this is, there is some time considerations here. Time is of the essence.
And the more time is the essence, the less we get from them.
No.
The more we get, the more we have to negotiate. This is not a time to be, I think, I think we should move on to something else. I don't think we should talk about this right now.
We're going to bring them to you folks.
Yeah.
Sure. They're willing to come.
Well, wait, 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 I put that, if we sit here and wait another month, okay? Who's to say that this deal is still around?
You ready to put your hand on, hand in the paper on it?
Absolutely not. But I'm willing to go find out.
That's what we're telling that, are you willing?
And if there's two gentlemen a week to get the numbers, does that, yeah, makes you happy? I really think, I apologize by the way, for bringing this, exposing this in this environment. But I think Bernie's got a really good point, I think we should give them a week, drop this right now, and, and get back. Why are we saying a week?
We want a timeline. I mean, they saw they want to come and have discussions with you, and we haven't seen any numbers. It is weird.
Yeah.
It is a frigging weird, can quote that, negotiation. It is. So he's saying, they're coming, let's go talk to you right now, let's see some numbers before we come to you, because I want you for me. And I, I don't mind a week, because we need.
Well, take, take two weeks, and leave that be at the outside. And besides, that's just part of the flavor, just part of the flavor, how they. And I'm not suggesting we just do Liberty, I'm suggesting we do the, hook up the dry lines and do Liberty. And we can get all those outcomes right now. Okay, next thing, and now we're out of the market.
You said.
Give us some sunshine opportunities, a one point three million dollar swing into the dark. Check the couch cushions.
I thought some things, they don't have to buy any pens, actually. Thank you, Mayor.
Are we down to paying the four hundred and fifty million dollar lot over tonight? Is that what, is that what we're down to?
No comment, Mayor.
Can't lose, you don't play.
Um, I, I, Mayor, Council, I just wanted to, everyone else has kind of presented their department. I'll budge, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I don't see you foresee any changes to my department budget, that, that are any special needs or any special projects.
There is a project. I, I just have one question that I want to ask of Robert, and it's a, to give me the context of the, the beginning of this discussion, we, we looked at the projections, I mean, I'm sorry, the budgets for fifteen and sixteen, and said there's a, there's a one point three million dollar difference. Just in the enterprise fund, it was, oh, three hundred thousand dollars or something like that. But if I look at the projected actuals on, on page six, the actuals for fifteen are actually less than the budget for sixteen. So the, the concern, the worry, you know, looking at sixteen and saying things are turning down, when, when the actual, projected actuals for fifteen are actually seven hundred thousand dollar less than the proposed budget for sixteen, what?
budget for 16, why, why am I worried anymore?
I have to confess that I did plug in the projected actuals without departmental help for the rest of the 2015 year, so if we go back to the detail, maybe we can see exactly where that might be the cause. So which, sort of, Kifli water system?
What page are you on? Well, I was looking at the enterprise. I'm sorry, Robert. I was looking at the enterprise fund.
Yes, 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 yes. And I see the numbers you're talking about. So if we go to page seven, that's the wastewater system, Mayor Council, and projected actuals and the budget is different permanently. I think it's due to the development impact fee dollars that were not collected that were based on the belief of certain number of permits being pulled for new construction. And we, while we still believe those permits will be pulled, it's just a time shift issue in terms of when they're going to be pulled. It's going to happen, we just don't know exactly which fiscal year. So I believe more are being pulled, the second half of this year, that might not be included. While I know they're not included in my projected actual, again, because I put those numbers in there myself, and there has been actual permits that have been pulled in January that will be, meaning that this projector of this slide probably won't realize. Because there'll be capacity charges now, but I don't think that's as well, so.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else, Robert?
No, Mayor, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Anything from our citizens before we move along?
Yes.
Bob Morris, Seattle Run, I couldn't help listening to the project analysis that you're doing here with regard to the Liberty deal. And, you know, we put up with many, many years of paying these fees and getting nothing back because the plan is run under capacity. And I'd like to submit to you that the deal ought to be $1 less than their alternative, whether that be building a new plant, or so we discuss it, or something else. I don't think we're limited to just what the citizens are paying for hookup fees. We should approach this, in my opinion, like we're being their utility. We're not. We're processing. This is a business deal. It's not a government function. That's my opinion.
Anything else from our citizens?
On, on the same topic, I believe that there are two issues. Financial viability, operational viability. If an examination of this shows that both of those exist, it certainly would be something that we need to move forward on. And you may not like this, but I would suggest, nobody ever likes what I say, I would suggest that a member of the Water Advisory Committee sit in on the negotiation, the initial negotiation, just so that there is a party there that has been looking at this whole situation for a year and a half, concerned about how it's going to ever get resolved without, you know, we throw money in the sewer, we've done it year after year after year. We have to find a way to resolve that. Sure, hook up the dry sewers. I live in Estata de Troya, you know, I'll expect to get hooked up someday. Fine. But that's not going to do it. That's, that's a very low percent of what the sewer plant needs to operate properly. If, if we can discuss with Liberty what they need and match it with what we need, which is flow and dollars, then we probably can go forward with some sort of a plan. But, you know, I think it might be a little early to get the council involved in it because that escalates it to the nth degree before you can resolve a lot of the little issues. There aren't just, there aren't just the issues that have been talked about so far. There's also the line issues, what gets replaced in the line. Is it going to be a duplicate line? Is it going to be utilizing the existing line? What about the junction plant at Reshman Yama? It's going to have to be something done with that. That obviously would be part and parcel of this. So there's, there's a lot to it. It's one of those things with details that are part of negotiations that all of the staff do before the high monkey mucks get there and say, oh, this is a great idea, or this is a terrible idea. I'm just suggesting that that might be a way to approach it. Thanks.
Anything else from our citizens? Anything else before the council tonight on the budget?
I mean, would you focus back to either hand?
Well, I think that's- When can we have some of the information that we've asked for this evening?
When's the next council meeting, Ken? March or-
Tuesday, February 17th.
February 17th, and then-
And March 2nd.
March 2nd. I would, I would like to do, if you do it again, you should, after March 2nd. I know March 2nd is going to be a busy agenda for you, but maybe just time, and I want to have discussions with department heads, where we're going, within the respective department. Okay, when does the citizens' budget committee begin to meet? What, what's the- It's April, it's in April. Okay, all right. That's at least type information. After, after March 2nd.
Monday, March 9th.
Wait, wait, we lost another month.
Peter was asking for at least three weeks. And we have a council meeting March 2nd. If we could do it on a Tuesday, Wednesday night, then we have to step to the second.
I don't have the department head budget, so I want to be a bit down.
No, no, no. What I mean is, we could have numbers, statistics, whatever data we need from Liberty. Maybe by the end of the week. They were talking two different things.
I'm not talking about Liberty.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking about-
No, Liberty, I expect much sooner.
Okay. To me, what another budget meeting, that's question, not another Liberty. And if we do, when do we want? And the data is-
I'm just saying, it's March 9th.
And at that meeting, what budget wise is it going to be presented?
I just want to have, at least have it. My thought is, in the meantime, I'm meeting with the department heads, talking about their budgets, where we are. You know, we have some of our projections where we are on the revenue, so let's start bringing in a package to you, at least in parts, of where we think we need to be by the departments on that. Let me tell. I like these. I have different views, and I'm okay with that, but I like this form. I think it's helpful so everyone knows where everything's at. And if I'm going down the wrong path, we said we shift gears at that time.
No, but it's something, but at some point, it shifts over to the citizens' committee that actually works for us.
Yeah, I have to.
Bring the budget to council.
I don't want, I want your folks to have a better handle on it than not. I, more information is better. And right now, you folks, I mean, independently, will contact me saying, can we look at this? Can I look at that or whatever? I think that's good.